Welcome alumni and friends to this, our closing session of this year's virtual Spring Alumni Week. Before we begin, I have just two quick announcements to make. Today's webinar is being recorded and the link to the recording will be shared via email following the event. We have live auto captioning enabled. Please click on the live transcript feature at the bottom of your Zoom screen to view or hide these captions throughout today's session. We will reserve time at the end to address questions submitted through the Q and A feature found at the bottom of your Zoom screen. Our guest today really requires no introduction, but I will briefly introduce him. Professor Robert A. Stein from the class of 61 is the Everett Fraser Professor of Law at the University of Minnesota Law School. From 1994 to 2006, Professor Stein was the Executive Director and Chief Operating Officer of the American Bar Association. Prior to that, Professor Stein was Dean of the Law School from 1979 to 1994, and was the very first William S. Patey Professor of Law from 1990 until 1994. Before becoming Dean of the Law School, Professor Stein was Vice President for Administration and Planning of the University of Minnesota from 1977 to 1979. Professor Stein joined the faculty of the Law School in 1964. Professor Stein currently teaches a seminar on the rule of law and a course on the Supreme Court and great cases that have shaped the nation, a law school favorite and the course from which Professor Stein will share today's lecture. Professor Stein, welcome.
Well, thank you, David. I appreciate the invitation, the introduction. Good morning, good afternoon, good evening, whichever time zone you are in. I'm delighted to greet you on behalf of the University of Minnesota Law School. I wish we could reconnect in person and hopefully next year we will be able to do that. Before we begin the class today, I would like to say a few words in tribute to Vice President Walter Mondale, who passed away earlier this week. Vice President Mondale was one of the most distinguished graduates in the entire 133-year history of the Law School. He was a great advocate for justice and human rights, and he had a great love for his Law School. So I want to thank him for his strong support of his beloved Law School. As David said, since I returned to the faculty of the Law School after leaving the ABA in 2006, one of the courses I teach every year is a constitutional law course entitled "The Supreme Court and 25 Great Cases That Have Shaped the Nation." The course starts with Marbury versus Madison in 1803. It keeps expanding a little bit. This last year it continued up to Boston versus Clayton County, a 2020 case that held the Civil Rights Act of 1964 protects employees against discrimination because they are gay or transgender. Today, we will talk about Brown versus Board of Education. The 1954 Supreme Court decision that held racial segregation in public schools is unconstitutional, even if the segregated schools are otherwise equal in quality to the schools for the white children. Many consider this case the most important case ever decided by the Supreme Court. We begin with Chief Justice Earl Warren, who wrote the opinion in the case. It's a unanimous opinion. In my opinion, Chief Justice Warren is one of the two greatest chief justices in our nation's history. The other, of course, is John Marshall, the great Chief Justice. And the two were so much alike. Neither was a judge before they went on the court. Neither was a legal scholar. Both were politicians and both had incredible people skills and leadership skills. I think most importantly, both had a vision that drove them as they led the court through the cases of their term. John Marshall had a vision of a great national government, an America that he hoped would come into existence, and a strong central government advanced very much during his years as Chief Justice. Chief Justice Warren, on the other hand, had a vision of an America that never was, an American that was more just, an America that recognized the equal rights of persons of whatever color or race, and an America that had more just criminal justice rules and procedures. And so he led the court to that result. A little further word about Chief Justice Earl Warren. To say he was a remarkable politician understates that. He became Attorney General of California in 1939. He was elected Governor of California in 1942 as a Republican. In 1946, he was elected in the primary of the Republican Party, the Democratic Party, and the Independent Party, called the Progressive Party. So he actually ran unopposed for Governor of California in 1946. He was a candidate for Vice President with Thomas Dewey in 1948, and they narrowly lost to President Truman and Elvin Barkley. He was reelected Governor of California again in 1950. He was running for president in 1952 when he was approached by Dwight Eisenhower, also running for president. And Dwight Eisenhower said to him, "If you will support me, I promise I will appoint you my first appointment to the Supreme Court." And so when Chief Justice Fred Vinson died suddenly in 1953, Eisenhower contacted his Attorney General, Herbert Brownell, and said, "What did I actually promise, Earl Warren? Did I say the first Associate Justice or the Chief Justice?" So Brownell called Warren and Warren said, "Well, he told me the first appointment." And so Eisenhower honored that appointment and that promise, and Earl Warren became the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court in 1953. I hope you realize what an enormous accomplishment it was. He came in, the court at that time, as we'll go through, was, had legends. Some of the titans of the court were on the court at that time. And he was a politician who just came in. He wasn't even confirmed by the Senate. He was a recess appointment because he sat on the court less than three weeks after his predecessor Fred Vinson died. And yet he had the confidence and vision to lead the court to this result. So this is a case about the equal protection clause in the Fourteenth Amendment, approved in 1868. And the key words are the last two lines of the Fourteenth Amendment on this slide. "State shall not deny to any person within its jurisdiction the equal protection of laws." So let's go into the background of Brown versus the Board of Education. And that is the case of Plessy versus Ferguson in 1896. In Plessy, which is a case involving a separate railcar for African-Americans, the issue was, was that a violation of the Constitution? And in an opinion agreed to by the entire court, except for Justice John Marshall Harlan, the court held that did not violate the Constitution because although separate cars for whites and blacks, the cars were equal and sort of laid down the doctrine of separate but equal meets the constitutional standard. And if you look at the slide on the screen, the key language is in the middle by Justice Brown. "We consider the underlying fallacy of the plaintiff's argument to consist in the assumption that the enforced separation of the two races stamps the colored race with a badge of inferiority. If this be so, it is not by reason of anything found in the act, but solely because the colored race chooses to put that construction on it." We'll compare that to the language of Chief Justice Warren in just a minute. But Plessy versus Ferguson gave rise to the Jim Crow laws. And so segregation became the law of the land and flourished in many states, particularly in the South. And so we had separate lodging for African-Americans, separate transportation facilities, separate parks, separate theaters, separate drinking fountains. In every aspect of life, there was apartheid and segregation on the basis of race. There was a dissent, as I said, in Plessy versus Ferguson. John Marshall Harlan, named after the great Chief Justice, but no relation. "In view of the Constitution, in the eye of the law, there is in this country no superior race, no dominant ruling clan of citizens. Our Constitution is colorblind." And that was a famous dissent. He, Marshall, John Marshall Harlan is called the great dissenter. He dissented in a number of civil rights cases, having a very fine record in that regard. This dissent did cause some problems later in the 20th century by providing the Constitution is colorblind when issues involving affirmative action occurred. But nevertheless, is a ringing recognition of equal protection of all races by the dissent in Plessy. Well, the years went by. The law was separate but equal between 1896 and 1954, and the date of Brown versus Board of Education. In 1909, the NAACP was created. In 1948, segregation was outlawed in the military by order of President Truman. And so there were a number of changes, and the NAACP was working to bring about the change in the law on the subject. And leading that charge was Thurgood Marshall, who was then the Director of the NAACP Legal Defense Fund. They decided to challenge separate but equal, beginning with the schools, because they thought that involving children was more supported by the American people. And so to begin the task, they thought the best way is to start challenging the equal and separate but equal. And there were a number of cases that were brought in which the facility was separate, but the argument was, yes, they're separate, but they're not equal, and that's the lead-up to Brown. So let me cover a little bit of that, challenging the equal and separate but equal. One of the cases actually precedes Thurgood Marshall, and that's the Missouri X-Roll Gaines decision in 1938. In that case, Missouri had a law school for whites only, and it, by law, would provide tuition for any black students who wished to go to the Law School to pay the tuition in some other state. That was held to be unconstitutional, and so they established a separate law school in Missouri for blacks. And in 1938, that was declared unconstitutional. It clearly wasn't equivalent to the primary white-only law school of Missouri. And so it was decided under separate but equal, but not, the facilities were not equal. Then there were two decisions in 1950 for which Thurgood Marshall was the principal attorney. One was Sweat versus Painter, and the other was McLaurin versus Oklahoma State Board of Regents. And Sweat versus Painter involved the University of Texas Law School, and Texas had its primary law school, was large, had a large library. And they established a second law school for African-Americans, which they called the Prairie View Law School. And it was clearly not equal, less than one-third the faculty size, much, much smaller library. And so in Sweat versus Painter, it was held the facilities were not equal, and therefore Texas was ordered to admit African-Americans. And McLaurin involved the Oklahoma University, and they had been ordered to admit African-Americans. But once admitted, they required African-Americans to sit in a separate part of the classroom and a separate part of the cafeteria, the separate part of the library. And the holding in McLaurin was, no, separate but equal means not only admitting both races, but having comparable facilities in both the white and black programs. So that leads us then directly to Brown. Brown is actually five cases. Brown versus the Board of Education of Topeka, Briggs versus Elliott, which is a South Carolina case, Davis versus the County School Board of Prince Edward County from Virginia, Gafford versus Belton out of Delaware, and then a federal case from DC, Bowling versus Sharp. All of these are what I call manufactured cases. That is to say, they were planned, plaintiffs were located to challenge the law and try to bring about acts that would change the separate but equal doctrine. And so decisions were reached in all of these jurisdictions, and the Supreme Court combined them into one case. Now, why is it called Brown versus the Board of Education? That was the first listed case of the five that were combined. If Briggs versus Elliott had been the first listed, it would have a different name. And that follows through with respect to the case itself. The Brown versus the Board of Education actually had 13 plaintiffs. The NAACP went out and looked for plaintiffs to challenge the law in Topeka, Kansas. And Oliver Brown was a particularly attractive plaintiff. He was a nuclear family. He had a great job. He was an assistant minister with the railroad, the job with the railroad, was Assistant Minister of his church. And so the NAACP listed him first as the, of the 13 plaintiffs. So his name, Brown, became the name of the Topeka case, and then Brown became the name of the collaboration of the five cases. Oliver Brown brought that suit on behalf of his daughter Linda Brown, who was a third grader. She lived within walking distance of the white school, the Sumner School, but she lived over 1.6 kilometers from the Monroe School, which was the school for African-American students. So she would have to walk past her closest school, a kilometer, almost one and three, four kilometers to attend. And so that were the appealing facts of her case. Unfortunately, Linda Brown died in March of 2018. So she was with us since the case, but just recently passed away. Well, the history of the case, Brown Court, the trial court dismissed Brown's case. They said, "There's no inequality between these two schools. The longer commute is normal because there are fewer African-American schools than there are white schools. So that's not the result of any discrimination." And we're bound by Plessy versus Ferguson, which holds that separate but equal is the constitutional law of the land. Brown versus Board in Topeka was a special three-judge court, which allowed a direct appeal from the trial court to the Supreme Court. So I'm not going to talk about the other four cases, but let's go then to the Supreme Court. And they were all on the term of the Supreme Court in the fall of 1952. And we'll see that the Brown versus Board of Education and the additional cases were argued twice, once in 1952 and again in 1953. Let's take a look at the lawyers. And these are the lawyers in the Kansas case, although Thurgood Marshall was the lawyer on all five cases for the NAACP as Director of the NAACP Legal Defense Fund. And Paul Wilson was an Assistant Attorney General of Kansas, representing the state of Kansas as the School Board of Topeka. There were lawyers for each of the other four cases, some of them with great reputations. For example, John W. Davis, a former Democratic candidate for president in 1924, represented South Carolina, and he had argued before the Supreme Court more than 140 times. He was probably the most distinguished Supreme Court advocate in the country at that time. So a word about each of them. Thurgood Marshall, Chief Counsel for the NAACP. He won the cases in Sweat versus Painter and McLaurin versus Oklahoma State. Marshall had tried to be admitted to the University of Maryland and was denied because he was African-American. And so when he, and he decided then to go to Howard Law School, it turns out that was a great benefit to him because the dean of Howard Law School was Charles Hamilton Houston, who was developing the legal theory for challenging Jim Crow laws throughout the country. And so Charles Hamilton Houston and Thurgood Marshall worked to advance this plan. Marshall did sue Maryland, University of Maryland, after he was admitted to the bar because of segregation, and he hoped to take that case to the Supreme Court. But for that purpose at least, it wouldn't happen because he won the case in the trial court. They did integrate, and so he wasn't able, Maryland was integrated, but he wasn't able to take the case to the Supreme Court to strike down Plessy versus Ferguson. And that happened then in the case we're talking about, Brown versus the Board of Education. As we think you know, he went on to become the first African-American Supreme Court Justice. President Kennedy named him to the DC Court of Appeals in 1961. Lyndon Johnson appointed him Solicitor General, and President Johnson appointed him to the Supreme Court in 1967. Paul Wilson, who I introduced earlier, was Assistant Attorney General for Kansas. This was his first argument in the Supreme Court. He has said that he was opposed to segregation. His heart was not in the case that he argued, and he has written a book called "A Time to Lose", representing Kansas in Brown versus the Board of Education. He went on to become a professor of law at the University of Kansas after this case. I met Paul Wilson when I was at the ABA. We had a seminar on Brown versus the Board of Education on the 50th anniversary of Brown back in 2004. And both Paul Wilson and Judge Robert Carter, who was the Associate Counsel to Thurgood Marshall in the case, were present, and they discussed warmly about what went on in the case. It was a fascinating discussion. But Paul Wilson made it very clear that he was very happy to be on the losing side of the case. So the case went to the court. The Chief Justice was Fred Vinson at that time. It was first argued in the Supreme Court on December 9th of 1952. And after the argument, they took a tentative vote, and the court voted to uphold separate but equal by a vote of five to four. They were prepared to vote in favor of the plaintiffs challenging the equal part of separate but equal, but not to strike down the constitutionality of the separate part. They were a little uncomfortable with that result. And so even though they reached a decision, and it's very clear from a number of sources, including the papers of Justice Douglas, who was on which side, who were the four and who were the five, they decided to put the case over for reargument in the fall of 1953, the next term. And then an extraordinary thing happened. Chief Justice Vinson died of a heart attack in September of 1953. A few points up here. He was attending an ABA meeting in New York, and he died in his hotel room, and they didn't show up for the meeting, so they looked for him and found him deceased. He wasn't known to have heart difficulty, so this was quite a shock. So between September 8th and the first Monday in October, President Eisenhower followed through on his promise and appointed Earl Warren to the Supreme Court. So Earl Warren came in, unconfirmed, a recess appointment, coming right from the political office of Governor in these remarkable set of facts, and sat with the court in 53. Brown was reargued in December 9th of 1953, a year after the first time. And the decision in the case came out in May of 1954. So let's go through the court with the presence of Earl Warren as the Chief Justice, the only Eisenhower appointment on the court, and he served from 1953 to 1969. There were five Roosevelt appointees still on the court, and these were some of the legends, still regarded as some of the historic titans on the court. Judge, Justice Hugo Black, Justice Stanley Reed, Justice Felix Schreifer, Justice William O. Douglas, and Justice Robert Jackson. Were five of the nine justices, and the other three were Truman appointees, Justice Harold Burton, Justice Tom Clark, and Justice Sherman Minton. And let me go through these with you, each one. I've said quite a bit about the great Chief Justice Warren. He led the court for 16 years, changed constitutional law enormously in America, primarily in the areas of equal protection and criminal law. He was not necessarily the greatest opinion writer, but he was joined shortly after his appointment by Justice William Brennan, another Eisenhower appointee. And William Brennan is probably the best justice in Supreme Court history at getting five votes. He was brilliant. He could develop a theory that would master precedent to appeal to justices and bring about a result. He famously told his clerks, "Without five votes, you don't have anything." So he worked to get five votes, and he was a great aide to Warren later. In fact, he was called Deputy Chief Justice by the clerks because of his great ability to do that. So that was the only change in the court. The others are all the same justices, and let me go through them. When they voted, keep this in mind, Warren voted to overturn separate but equal, joining the four who had voted that way in 1952. And so after the vote, he went around to every chamber and said, "Look, we know how this case is going to come out. There are five votes to overturn Plessy versus Ferguson, and do you want to be on the wrong side of history?" And one by one, the other four justices came over, but let's talk about them for just a minute. First is Hugo Black. Hugo Black was Roosevelt's first appointment. He was a senator from Alabama who favored Roosevelt's court packing plan. Hearing argument for court packing once again this year. But Roosevelt had wanted to pack the court to get more justices uphold his New Deal program, and Black was a strong supporter of that. So in 1937, when Roosevelt had his first appointment, he put Black on the court. But Black had been a member of the Ku-Pluks Plan as a Birmingham lawyer, and the American Civil Liberties Union mounted a plan to block his confirmation. But his confirmation went through so quickly that they were unable to do so. He turned out to be one of the great civil libertarians in Supreme Court history. For example, he believed in an absolute First Amendment, not even exceptions for yelling fire in a crowded theater. exceptions for yelling fire in a crowded theater. And so Black was one of the ones who would have overturned Plessy versus Ferguson the first time around. The the others, incidentally, who were in that group the first time around were Justice Douglas, Justice, and then two of Truman's appointees as well. Want to say a word about Roosevelt's appointments. He had several appointments, but four have been singled out as among the great giants in Supreme Court history. Black is one, Justice Douglas is another, Justice Robert Jackson is a third, and Justice Felix Frankfurter is a fourth. And if you're interested in the Supreme Court and particularly that era of the Supreme Court, let me call to your attention a brilliant book by Noah Feldman entitled Scorpions. Feldman is a law professor at Harvard. The title of the book Scorpions comes from a quote that talked about the justices are like scorpions in a bottle. They just fight each other without any leniency. All of these justices went on the court as liberals, believing in the New Deal, supporting Roosevelt. But because they had different theories, they grew to dislike each other. In fact, ultimately, Justice Jackson wrote a letter criticizing, wrote a letter to the New York Times criticizing Justice Black, saying that he had a conflict of interest in a case. And so although they they came on as liberals, they were far from amicable when they served together and they had different factions. We don't have time to go into today. Stanley Reed is Roosevelt's second appointment in nineteen thirty-eight. He was Solicitor General under Roosevelt. As you may know, the New Deal cases started getting approved by the court after the change in nine time, excuse me, saved at nine and allowing the a switch of the court, but also in the new appointment of justice. But also contributing to the better result for the New Deal cases was the arguments of Stanley Reed. He was a brilliant Supreme Court advocate. He just worked and worked and worked. In fact, one time he actually passed out while arguing before the Supreme Court and then came back and argued some more. So he handled many of those major cases. He was from Kentucky, grew up in the South. He's the hardest one for Warren to persuade to join the opinion. He 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 just couldn't see it that way. He thought it was in the nature of things, the Jim Crow separation. And so he thought if they're equal, it shouldn't make a difference if they're separate. And he intended to write a dissent in the case, but Warren was able to prevail on him at the last minute and that made the decisions unanimous. And in light of all of the protests and rioting in the country for the years after Brown, it was so important and that Warren knew that the decision had to be unanimous. And he did cause Stanley Reed to join the opinion. Felix Frankfurter was not in the original group of four, supporting overturning Plessy versus Ferguson. He's Roosevelt's third appointment, brilliant, supposedly had the second highest average after Brandeis. He came onto the court as a far left liberal. He was a founder of the A C L U and got involved in cases like Sacco, Vanzetti and many cases that supported the left. But Frankfurter's idol was Oliver Wendell Holmes and he is part of the group that venerated and built up the Holmes mystique. And Oliver Wendell Holmes was a motoritarian. He believed in supporting the majority will. The famous Lochner dissent, he upheld the New York statute that limited Baker's hours, but that's because thought the people of New York should speak on that question. Well, if you believe in not overturning legislation and upholding legislation in a Warren court, that's going to put you in the dissent in a number of times. And so that's caused Frankfurter to be viewed as moving to the right, to the right, to the right. In the last two years before his retirement in nineteen sixty-two, the court overturned two of his major opinions, Bets versus Brady and Cogo versus Green. And I think he he had a broken heart. He the court was not deciding cases like he knew they should. And so he resigned in nineteen sixty-two. And within months after his resignation, he he had a heart attack and then died. And then we come to William O Douglas, one of the great characters in Supreme Court history. Roosevelt's fourth appointment was on the S E C when appointed. A great environmentalist. He's one that wrote the opinion saying trees should outstanding to bring suit. He said, why can't trees or hills or lakes be a plaintiff? Corporations are not persons and they can bring suit, so trees should be able to do that as well. He is was absolutely great justice on the liberal side. He had an absolutely chaotic personal life. He was married four times and each of his first three wives received an alimony award, so he was always broke to raise money to pay alimony. And so he began writing articles, a lot of them about the environment. And he would find places to publish them in magazines that were somewhat sexually explicit. And so that was caused an initiation of impeachment proceedings against him at one point. He almost was president in nineteen forty-four when Roosevelt wanted to choose a new candidate to run with him. He he was too ill to come to the convention, but he wrote that two candidates were acceptable to him, Harry Truman and William O Douglas. The convention that year was in Kansas City. The chair of the convention read the names, the other than the way Roosevelt wrote them and read Harry Truman's name first and Truman had a lot of support in Missouri. And so Truman went on the ticket and that ended Douglas's opportunity to be president. I would say he was a different justice after that time. He just he knew he was not going to be president. And so he focused on his liberal jurisprudence and participated in a number of major decisions. He was in the original group to overturn the Plessy case the year before in nineteen fifty-two. He is the longest-serving justice in Supreme Court history. In fact, in the last year, he was very ill, but he didn't want to leave the court, even though the court urged him to leave. And so after he finally was unable physically to continue, the court scheduled for rehearing all of the cases in the last term in which he sat, in which he was in a five-member majority in the case. We come to Robert Jackson, appointed by Roosevelt in nineteen forty-one, a Attorney General under Roosevelt. He took a leave to be Chief Prosecutor in Nuremberg in nineteen forty-five. He's a brilliant orator, an eloquent writer. His opinions, I think, without question, are the most inspiring ever written. Many read like poetry. If you want to read beautiful words, read the his opinion in West Virginia Board of Education versus Barnett, which is the flag salute case. And his his opening statement in the Nuremberg Trials is included in every list of the best oratory of the twentieth century. He just had a gift of expression, but he was not in the original group to overturn Plessy. Now we'll come to the three Truman appointments. Harold Burton was Truman's first appointment. He is a Republican. Truman wanted to start out being bipartisan, so he named Burton a Senator from Ohio. Mostly Truman focused on cronies. The four of the, three of his four appointments were poker-playing buddies or bourbon buddies from his days in the Senate and the Congress. And Burton was one of those. He was in the group of four who would have overturned Plessy the year before. And we come to Tom Clark, who had been Truman's Attorney General. When he was Attorney General, Clark gave Truman advice about his war powers. At that time, in the late forties, the Korean conflict was developing. And Clark told Truman that he had powers to take over the steel mills necessary to provide munition for the war effort. And Truman indeed did that. Then in the Youngstown Steel case, Truman's action was challenged. It was held to be unconstitutional. Youngstown Steel is still the leading case on the powers of the president. But Truman, being the blue collar president that he was, was just furious at Clark. For telling me he could do this and then writing opinions saying he can. And Clark did that because he felt Truman could have used the Taft Hardley or another route rather than the War Powers Clause. Truman told his biographer that Tom Clark is really not a bad person. He's just a dumb son of a bitch. And finally, Sherman Minton from Illinois, from Indiana, was another crony. Loved to play poker, loved to drink bourbon with Truman. And Roosevelt had appointed Minton to the Seventh Circuit and which Truman elevated him to the Supreme Court. So let's get to the words of the holding. Warren wrote, we conclude that in the field of education, the doctrine of separate but equal has no place. Separate educational facilities are inherently unequal. Compare that to the language of Justice Brown in the Plessy versus Ferguson where he said, if if the one race puts a construction that separate makes one of them unequal, that's their problem, it's not in the law. Warren said, separate educational facilities are inherently unequal. Therefore, we hold that the plaintiffs and others similarly situated for whom the actions have been brought are for reason of the segregation complaint of deprived of the laws guaranteed by the Fourteenth Amendment. On to say, segregation with the sanction of law has a tendency to retard the educational and mental development of male children and to deprive them of some of the benefits they would receive in a racially integrated school situation. Whatever may have been the extent of psychological knowledge at the time of Plessy, this finding is amply approved by modern authority. Any language in Plessy versus Ferguson contrary to this finding is rejected. What is the modern authority he referred to? And that's a famous footnote eleven in Brown versus Board of Education, citing a brief filed by thirty-two social scientists, sociologists, anthropologists, psychologists, psychiatrists. And primarily in the brief is a doll test that had been done by Dr. Kenneth Clark, a psychology professor at the City University of New York. That footnote eleven has been called the most controversial footnote in American constitutional law and the best-known use of social science in any area of the law. I guess the point is this, it's not that the result is wrong, but by relying on social science research along the way, those research findings change from time to time and makes one of the rationales a little more weak. The result is right, but question the citation. In fact, the doll test, doll test was one where a black doll and a white doll were given to black children who were in a segregated school. And then the psychologists would watch them play with the dolls. And the majority of the time, the black children would want to play with the white doll. And the psychologists concluded that they had a feeling of inferiority as blacks. The the problem with this research is more recently and after Brown versus Board of Education, that same doll test was given to black students who were enrolled in integrated schools. And the results came out somewhat the same. So it raises the question of whether it's appropriate to rely on this social science rationale when the other rationales are so compelling.
Professor Stein, we're approaching time for our questions.
Okay, let me just wind this up then. There was no, there was no remedy given in Brown one. The court asked the attorneys to brief in Brown two the next year and the result in Brown two, the again another opinion by Warren, who said the result should be implemented with all deliberate speed, that left the task up to district courts and state legislatures all over the country. And every place it went, it generated protests and it was prolonged because it continued over a long period of time. It involved the Little Rock students where there were tremendous opposition. Governor Favas tried to bar the high school door, called out the National Guard. And then Eisenhower nationalized it to protect the nine. The major development of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four, implemented Brown into statute, also failed to set down a timeframe or scheme of desegregation. Then, of course, were a number of cases since then that dealt with busing and came up in various areas. Question is, what caused the change? Was it Brown versus the Board of Education? Was it the Civil Rights Act of sixty-four? Was it both? Was it what was more important? Or the way I ask the question, could the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four have have occurred without Brown versus the Board of Education? Normally, the court is a little bit behind culture change in the country, but in this case, the court was leading the change. So I'd finally leave you with this as we end the class. Has the promise of Brown been realized? We see that discrimination continues. Some experts have said there's as much or more segregation in the schools right now, de facto segregation, not the jury segregation. And so other factors involving distribution of income, of location, of of housing for people to live. And it's a much bigger challenge. So I would say the challenge of Brown continues to go on, although we have the inspiration of the court in nineteen fifty-four to reach this result. So having said that, I would go on. Read the questions to me, Lizzie, will you do that or?
Yes, so our first, our first question is that Brown v. Board marked a legal turning point for the American civil rights movement. Today, our country is in a new legal, new level of civil rights activity in our continuing efforts to create a society that treats all citizens equally. Are there any cases that you think are making their way up to the court that could be the next Brown v. Board of Education for the current civil rights movement?
Well, it's proceeding in in several areas and in legislation as well. As I said, it deals not just with challenging legal laws of segregation, but housing patterns, bank mortgage lending rules. And so there are a number of ways in which it will come up. More recently, the the discrimination has been reflected, unfortunately, in the criminal law where black defendants have tragically suffered death in the course of their their apprehension. So I'm not sure just where. So I'm not sure just where it will come, whether it's in the school area, whether it's in income areas and other social benefits area, or the criminal justice area. But I think there's, we're far from a, a society that doesn't discriminate. And I think there are many ways in which this result will be challenged.
Thank you, Professor Stein. Another question that's come in is asking, "What, what have been the interpretations of all deliberate speed?"
Well, initially, busing was ordered in a number of jurisdictions. And people objected to having their children spend a lot of time on buses each day, notwithstanding the expense. Secondly, with the drawing of school districts, you might integrate the center city, but that wouldn't involve the, a separate area district. It would be the suburbs. And so lawsuits were brought to try to include the suburban district in the center city district. Another was to, a court to take over the operation of schools. That happened in Boston with the riots in the South Boston area. And the federal court in South Boston operated the schools for a period of time. In fact, right in Minneapolis, a great trial judge, Judge Earl Larson, issued an order taking over the school system in Minneapolis. And that continued for decades. So there were a variety of ways in which this was done, but it took so much, so many years from 1954 well up into the 21st century.
Thank you, Professor Stein. And another question has come in talking about the Supreme Court at the time of Brown v. Board and then today. And the question is, "It feels like the Supreme Court has become incredibly politicized today, but it's easy to be myopic and think it was better back in the day. You've talked a bit about the members of the court at the time, but do you have any other insight or comparison to that court and today's court? And if a deeply divided country could have a different impact on decisions today?"
Well, I have studied the Supreme Court closely through the years. And I think there's always been politics in the Supreme Court, at least in the political values that the Supreme Court justices hold and they're appointed by presidents that appoint them for those values. I, I, I disagree with those who think the Supreme Court is just another political body. I, I do think the justices are remarkable individuals who strive to reach the right result, making allowance for the values that they bring to the court. And they don't always act the way people predict they'll act. Certainly, that wasn't the way with Chief Justice Warren, appointed by Republican Dwight Eisenhower or several others during that time. George H. W. Bush was surprised, the result of one of his appointments. My feeling is you can't really tell how a judge is going to decide until the judge has been on, the justice has been on the court for at least three or four years and they have life tenure. And I keep foreseeing the difference in the current court. Quite honestly, I think because of the great disappointment many people had about the failure to confirm Merrick Brown, there's been an assumption that the current justices will decide cases politically. And if you watch the court closely right now, that's not really happening right now. We're seeing some alliances. And I, I really think we have three factions on the court right now. A centrist faction and a far right and a far left group. And I would put certainly Justice Breyer in the centrist group and Justice Hagan in the centrist group and certainly the Chief Justice Roberts in that group. And of the new appointments, Justice Kavanaugh has agreed with the Democratic appointments in many ways that are surprising. And you take Justice Gorsuch, appointed by Trump, wrote that Bostock versus Clayton County decision, some blockbuster decision saying the Civil Rights Act of 1964 protects gays and transgenders. So I'd urge people who want to see it only as another politics to look closely before they reach that conclusion. And the problem I have with putting people on, expecting them to rule a particular way is what goes around comes around. And each party doesn't always stay in the majority. So you have to judge it by what you want, what you want to happen if the party is in the minority.
Thank you, Professor Stein. Another question for you, especially does, you know, thinking about the long-term effects of Brown v. Board, does it continue to be cited in recent Supreme Court cases, such as voting rights or anything else?
Yes. Obviously, the decision has its application in the field of public education, but it's, it's frequently cited on cases involving the equal protection clause that equal protection clause requires races to be treated equally in the law.
Thank you. And I think our, our last question that we have time for, you know, we are, right now, we're on a webinar. We're interacting electronic, electronically. We've seen with the use of cameras in the Chauvin trial that people had a different access to the court system across the world, really. What are your thoughts on the use of cameras in the courtroom? And would it be something that the Supreme Court should consider?
Well, I think it will happen in the Supreme Court later than in many of the other courts. There has been a concern in the Supreme Court that they don't want attorneys to be playing to the cameras. But we'll have to see after the Chauvin case. There's certainly, I think that was an example of a case advocating for cameras in the court. The O.J. Simpson case set cameras in the court back a decade because of the antics that went on and caused this case to last 10 months. And, and it has to do with how well the trial judge manages the courtroom. But if I had to make a prediction, I'd say, yes, there'll be an ever-increasing use of cameras in the court. And probably the last court to reach that conclusion will be the Supreme Court.
Well, thank you so much, Professor Stein. I think that's all of the time that we have today. I want to thank everyone who joined our webinar and for the questions that you've submitted. And have a wonderful weekend. Thank you so much, everyone.